Good evening, Facebook gentlemen and ladies, and welcome to the second Candidates Forum for with the League of Women Voters for St. Lucie County. Tonight, we're going to hear from candidates for School Board District 2, as opposed to last night, which was District 4, countywide election. My name is Andy Polley. I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters here in St. Lucie County. I have a few quick reminders for everyone regarding voting that I just would like to share with you. For starters, early voting begins August 6th. There are five locations for early voting in St. Lucie County. They're listed here. The mail-in ballots have already been sent out, and so if you've already requested your mail-in ballot, you've probably already received it. And if you have, then you can hand-deliver it to a supervisor of elections office. You can hand-deliver it to an early voting location once early voting starts, or you can mail it back. And if you mail it back, please allow 10 to 14 days for the United States Postal Service to get it to the supervisor's office, because it must be received August 18th by 7:00 PM. Otherwise, it will not be counted. Um, let's see. If you want to learn more about the League of Women Voters, please visit our website at LWVSLC.org. If you would like to find out where your polling place is, or if you want to check and see how many ballots have been returned already, you can visit the supervisor's website at SLCelections.com. And if you want to learn more about the candidates, not just tonight's candidates, but all of the candidates, please visit vote411.org. The candidates from tonight will receive different questions than appear on Vote411. And so we encourage you to visit that site as well, to become an even more educated voter. And lastly, the US Census for 2020 has already started. Poll census workers will be going out soon, door-to-door, to count all the heads of all the people that live in the country. If you have not completed your census already, please do so soon enough and save them the trip to your house. And so on to the forum. The, tonight, we're going to hear, like I said, tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates for School Board District 4. The format for tonight's forum will consist of a 90-second introduction by each candidate, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Finally, the candidates will make a two-minute closing statement. The order of candidates was randomly selected earlier. This is not a debate, and so candidates will make their statements, and we will move on to the next candidate or question. Candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds remaining, and again, when their time is up. Our moderator for this evening is Carol Wyatt. Carol is the owner and operator, she's the co-owner, I'm sorry, Greg. She is the co-owner and moderator of local radio stations WPSL in Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She's the president of WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and a member of the Port St. Lucie Businesswoman. Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are honored to have her as our candidate forum moderator for yet another year. And now, I'm going to toss it over to Carol.
And certainly, thank you, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forums. We want to thank the members of the League for all their efforts in developing the questions. We thank the candidates for being involved and participating today. We particularly want to thank all of the people watching and listening for informing yourselves in this very challenging year. So our second forum is St. Lucie County School Board District 2. It is a countywide race for a term of four years. It's for a seat on the board which sets policy for St. Lucie County Public Schools. The current office holder is not running for reelection. So we will begin with our candidates, Lennox Wiley, James Mons, and Jack Kelly. First, the opening statements, and we'll start with Lennox Wiley.
Hi, Carol, can you hear him?
No.
Mr. Wiley, we can't hear you?
Yeah. If we may, is there a mute on?
Let me check and see if his mute is...
We're all, we're all learning. This is the first time doing a candidate forum in this way, so we're all learning.
Okay, go ahead and try and unmute again, Mr. Wiley. Nope, I'm still not getting sound from him. Um, why don't we try this? Why don't we move on to our second, whoever's going to be second? And Mr. Wiley, if you can check in your settings to see if your microphone is on or off or something, that might be the problem. But we'll move on, and then we'll come to you, and you can be third this time around.
Okay, we will move to our candidate, James Mons, and you have an opening statement of a minute and 30 seconds, Mr. Mons.
Well, good evening. My name is James Mons. I'm a lifetime resident here of St. Lucie County. I was educated in the St. Lucie County School District, which I'm proud to say. After high school, I went on to get a criminology, a criminology degree, a BS in criminology, as well as political science. I have a master's degree in educational leadership, and a special degree in behavioral science. I'm running for this office because I am a lifetime resident here, and I understand what it takes to move on and move forward and become successful. I've been a teacher here in the St. Lucie County School District, as well as the district around the county, and I currently serve as an assistant principal now for a school downside. So with that being said, I feel like I have what it takes to run this position, to be able to make decisions for our educational community, because I'm doing it every day. Every day, that's my job. I've been doing this for the last 13 years of my life. I've dedicated my whole entire being to education and the cultivation of our youngest minds, which is our children. I also am a founder of Give Back to Kids Incorporated, which is a summer camp program for educational leadership to decrease summer slop. And I'm also on different boards here in the community for sports. So with that being said, and all that experience, I think that I'm the man for the job.
Okay, moving on to our next candidate, Jack Kelly. Opening statement, a minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Kelly, and I'm running for the School Board District 2 here in St. Lucie County. I'm a 30-year resident here in St. Lucie County in Port St. Lucie. We're in unprecedented times right now. I'm sure that, without saying, things are happening that have never happened before. And we need somebody with experience, and it's somebody who's been through some unprecedented times, which I have. The coronavirus pandemic has taught us a lot about ourselves and our systems, and now we need to apply all the lessons that we've learned and improve our schools, make for lost class, make up for lost classroom time, and help our students reach all their potentials. As a former vice mayor and city council member for 12 years, I have that professional and government experience to help get them the required two supporting funds to keep our schools' district on a path to success. My priorities, a platform that I have include quite a few things, but to protect the health and safety of all the students and teachers, the high-quality education for all students, ensure increased incentives for teachers and substitutes, increase community involvement, get more ed, special education teachers, and improve student environment and safety and security, which we don't want to forget about the security. Thank you.
Okay, all right, and now Lennox Wiley, if we may.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay. I switched computers. Unfortunately, I had another computer standing, but...
Okay, okay, opening statement.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lennox Wiley, candidate for School Board St. Lucie County District 2. I'm running on a platform of safe and security of our schools and children. More community inclusion, putting our children first, and being an advocate and a voice for the underserved and the underpaid in our community. I want to ensure that teachers, parents, and their children are represented at the table, and that safety is priority one. Politicians and Capitol Hill, judges and lawyers in courthouses around the country should be no safer than our children in our schools. I'm running because I care deeply about the issues of the disabled equity for all students, gender bias, race relations, and bullying. In this so-called, in this so-called normal, when a pandemic is wreaking havoc in our society, we need to elect someone who's going to make the safety of our children his number-one priority. I humbly ask that on August 18th, you stand with me, Lennox Wiley. I will be your voice, and I would make it a full-time job to put our children first.
Okay, we move now to the questions, and in our drawing ahead of time, Mr. Wiley, you will be going first. Budget cuts to education nationwide have resulted in a reduction of student access to art, to music, to sports, and other extracurricular activities. Now, research indicates that exposure to these very things improve a child's critical thinking skills and ability to learn. How do you propose expanding access to these activities in St. Lucie County?
Okay, today's students are tomorrow's workers. I intend to explore non-traditional avenues of revenue, such as bringing the businesses in our community to partner with the school district. I believe that the education of our students should not be placed on the shoulders of, that is the financial aspect of it, should not be placed on the shoulders of taxpayers only, that you're going to raise property taxes every time. That's going to be played out, there's only so much we can do. So I think it's time we take a fresh look at the monopolistic and oligopolistic entities that are thriving and actually doing well from the revenues they derive in our communities. And it's time we ask them to chip in and do their share, rather than bringing companies in that are looking for a tax break so they can open here. Let's ask them to come in and help shoulder the expenses of educating our children, which is going to be their pool of viable workers in the future.
Okay, same question to Mr. Mons. How do you propose expanding access to these activities in St. Lucie County?
One of the best ways to expand access to extracurricular activities is always to reach out to the community. We have a lot of kids who, you know, students rather, who are in those and after-school activities, who are in those and before-school activities, and who are very well-versed in school during that time. I myself am a product of a football scholarship, in which I was able to go off and do some great things and get a degree for free, and come back home and try to, you know, try to put that same fire, or what we call that same passion, into the students in the area. So that was one of the reasons why we started a nonprofit organization called Give Back to Kids Incorporated, and I'm also a part of a program called 7-on-7 Elite, in which we take 40 young men across the country to showcase their athletic ability. And our Give Back to Kids program, we actually showcase students in the area who are well-versed in the arts, whether that's dancing, whether that's music, whether that's singing, or theater, you know? So we want to find ways for the public to understand how important this is. I know now there's a situation where it's a pay-to-play game for the high school kids. My son plays high school football. We have to pay $2.50 for him to be able to compete. I think that there's an opportunity there for some of the businesses to come in and sponsor some of our schools, and sponsor some of our after-care programs, sponsor some of our extracurricular programs, in which they do, but I think it needs to go a little bit further and let them know exactly where that dollar's going. So the way that I would love to expand these particular extracurricular activities, as well as arts, is by incorporating or collaborating with the nonprofit organizations, which do a wonderful job in our area, to make sure our kids are successful, not only in school, but outside of school, not only educationally, but also in the arts, in which that's an opportunity for them to kind of find themselves. And we've seen individuals like myself and other individuals use that particular craft to go on and be able to do great things in their life.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Kelly, how would you propose expanding access to the extracurricular activities in St. Lucie County?
Well, you know, that's a great question, because I have to the budget. Finally, the budget with the right amounts on it. I had erroneous amounts last month, but $520 million budget here, and that's the Florida FEFP money. That's our actual budget, the money. This budget and the way they run things, first of all, everybody knows that St. Lucie County School District is really not a taxing authority, okay? We're regulated by the state, makes it tough. So to move money around in this budget, it's not like I did with the city. We could move it around pretty freely. It was a different, whole different atmosphere. This is a tough budget, and it's rough to understand, and I've spent many hours already with staff trying to figure this budget out and understand. Can't move it around freely. It's got to be what everybody's been saying through the community. And through the community, there's so many, we're so lucky in this county. We have so many organizations, such as the St. Lucie County Education Foundation. I could go on, I'm going to forget something. There's just dozens of organizations. I'm with the St. Lucie County Boys and Girls Club, who right now, we do after-school programs, and we're going to do, doing more. We're doing summer programs right now. I've been with them for 25 years, since the first year that we started the Boys and Girls Club in St. Lucie County. At one point, we were the fastest-growing Boys and Girls Club in the southern United States. I think that's the only way, it's community, all through the community, and I have the resources, and I have the connections to help get that. And I will do it as a team with both cities and the county administrators and everybody I can, and county commissioners, everybody I can put together, and I can get them all together and do it, I know I can. And that's the only way we're going to have money for that, got to invest.
Okay, we move on to our second question, and rotating, we start with Mr. Mons. School choice through private and charter schools and vouchers is a major topic of discussion, even at the highest levels of government. Do you agree with this type of school choice? Why or why not?
I think that having a choice is always great. I'm in education every single day, it's my everyday job. And one thing I do know is that education is not a cookie-cutter process. Every child is different, every school is different, and the way that we teach kids is a lot different. So I definitely think that having a choice is great. I think that charter schools are innovative in some ways, but at the same time, there are some bad ones too, that we have to make sure that we have, we're able to govern those, into those particular charter schools, and make sure that they're not decreasing all of the success that the students have made. So there's good charter schools, the ones that are doing a great thing. I love them because they're very innovative. They do things outside of the box, and I think that they're an asset to the community, because they sometimes take students who normally, or no less, wouldn't prosper inside of a traditional public school. As far as vouchers are concerned, vouchers to public schools, in which taxpayer dollars pay for those kids to go to school, I'm not, I'm not really fond of that, unless there's an extreme circumstance, in which I have seen some of those extreme circumstances where a student had to use a voucher to go to a private school because the student was in a rural area, and it was because of a parent's job. So that was something that we were able to kind of look into and say, okay, maybe that was an exception to the fact, but that's not something that I would be a proponent of every single time, no. So do I think that charter schools have a place in the community? Well, they're already here, and I didn't vote for or against either one of them, but they're already here, and because they're here and we govern them, and our kids are involved in these particular schools, we need to make sure we hold them accountable, the same way that we hold ourselves accountable, and the same way that the community is going to hold me accountable for making sure that I'm doing everything that I'm saying today. So to answer your question, the choice is great, having opportunities for charter schools and different schools for kids to be successful, because we want to make sure that every kid has an equal opportunity to be educated to the best of their ability to be, to be successful in their long, in their adult life.
Okay, same question to Jack Kelly. Do you agree with the type of school choice? Why or why not?
Well, you know, just as been stated, I don't want to say, you can have an opinion on this, and the opinions are pretty, are pretty tough. There seems to be three sides on this, and some of the opinions are, have a lot of hubris, but you know what? It's almost a moot issue now, because charter schools are the law of the land. They're here, we have choice, and that's, that's what's been decided, and we have to follow the law, and that's the law. We have charter schools. There's some misconceptions, and I have some problems with them. If they meet all the requirements when they apply within the city or the county, there's no, you have to say yes, that's the law. But there are some things. They get about 75% of the money, some people say, well, you know, that's, you know, the reason you cost less money. That's not true, because they don't have to bus, they don't have to bus the kids, I don't have to supply transportation. If you added that to it, the cost would, just that alone, we come up with saying, there's some other requirements that they don't have to meet. I'm worried about keeping the diversity in the schools and everything else with charter schools, and I hope the ones that we've had so far in Port St. Lucie down this way, and all over the county, are working out pretty good. Prep schools, vocational schools, tech schools are great to have, and it's good to have the choice. I just want to make sure that they meet all the requirements and do all the things that they say they're going to do. Choice is here, it's already here, and we have to abide by the law.
Okay, now, same question to Lennox Wiley. Do you agree with this type of school choice? Why or why not?
Well, I believe in a perfect world, we would not have a need for charter schools. However, here in St. Lucie County, our mantra is no child left behind. So in order to ensure equity for all students, we must make sure that we're making an effort to provide each and every student a quality education. In so doing, we must continue to fund the charter schools while improving the public school system, and at the same time, working to alleviate the burdens at the state system, which is what governs the school system.
Okay, next question, and we'll start with Jack Kelly. In your opinion, is St. Lucie County School's sex education curriculum comprehensive and age-appropriate? Does it ensure that students are well-educated about protecting themselves and others, and maintaining their health? If not, what improvements are needed?
Well, you guys are not leaving any stone unturned. You don't, you don't hold back on the tough questions, and that is a tough one. And I have an answer for you. The, all the sex education has to be done in the schools. Children need to know, they need to know, they need to know, they have to make choices, and they have to make the right choices, and there's repercussions. There's going to be things to be paid for if they don't make the right choices, they need to know about that. As far as the education itself, I think the parents have to be involved in some way, shape, or form, in some way, kind of feedback. And I don't know how you do that, I'll be quite honest with you, I'm not going to make up a plan. I think the first thing, one of the first things I would do is I would ask the board, if and when if I do get elected, I would ask the board to have a workshop on that, on how to bring the parents into the, to the full. Again, with everything we do, we need to have more parents' involvement. But this one, absolutely do, because it's pretty personal, and it goes to the education, the rounding of the child. Parents have to be involved in it. As far as when they should, it should this be in eighth grade or whatever, going to leave that up to the experts. I just, whatever they say is the right way, I'm not a professional expert in anything like that. But it should be worked shop, the parents have to be brought into the whole, the whole situation, and the children need to know that there's going to be, they're responsible for their actions. So I'm for it, but I think we have to do a lot of planning and have to do a lot of work on it.
Okay, same question to Mr. Wiley. Is it, is it age-appropriate for the sex education? And if not, what improvements are needed in the current curriculum? Mr. Wiley? Do we have the mute on, perhaps?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Yes, I believe at the high school level, it is age-appropriate. I'm not quite sure of the other grades. However, I agree with Jack, it's a tough one, and it's a question, it's one that needs a lot of parent involvement. The school has, the school system has taken on a responsibility, and rightly so, because sex education and actually sexual engagement is a very serious matter, and to have our young people just wantonly doing as they like without proper guidance, I think can only lead to disaster. So it is good that this, the school system has taken on that tough role and decided to be involved. And I can only say that we have to tread cautiously, try to make the right decisions, get a lot of expert advice, and try to do the best for our children.
Okay, same question to Mr. Mons. Are improvements needed in the current curriculum?
I would say, let me first start by saying, this is kind of personal for me, because I was a kid that, that ended up having a kid at 16, okay? So sexual education actually wasn't, wasn't part of my educational curriculum. But now here today, we do see that it is part of the curriculum, but it's not caused, it's more or less sexual awareness, where they teach the kids about their gender roles when they're in elementary school. So you get to learn about, you know, about your genitals, or the girls get to learn about their particular private parts, how they made, what happens to them. And then when they move up to eighth, to middle school, then it becomes a sexual education-type class, where they actually teach the students about certain things in their arena of sex. For the most part, parents do have a choice. Parents can opt out of that program if they would like. I have seen parents opt out of that program, and because they felt that their student wasn't quite ready for that. At the high school level, it gets a little bit more intense, where they actually talk about how babies are made and things of that sort. But I think that there needs to have, there definitely needs to have more conversations. I've seen schools where they brought in outside sources from the health clinic to come in and speak to the, to the, to the young ladies and young men about what takes place, and how things kind of, kind of, you know, work as far as when it comes to two adults becoming to, beginning to consent to have sex. So some of these things are already happening, but I think that we definitely need to make sure that it's happening on an appropriate scale. And when I say appropriate scale, meaning the conversation that we're having is a real conversation, and we're not more or less sugar-coating too many things. Because I myself, again, was a product of being a teen father, and my wife was a teen mother. So we went through that process, and I sometimes feel like, maybe if we would have had a little bit more sexual educational awareness in school, maybe we would have made a different decision. But it was one of the best decisions of my life that happened to me, as far as my son, and everyone want to have the same support system that I had with my parents. So I definitely want to talk about the awareness and keep it going that way, and make sure the students are successful.
Okay, thank you. Next question, now, we'll start with Lennox Wiley. St. Lucie County Schools has a robust selection of elementary magnet schools, as well as specialized education and attractor programs for high school students that are extremely popular. So should this selection be further expanded, or should more focus be put on trade skill development? Mr. Wiley?
Well, I am all in for the expansion of the specialized education and attractor program. I believe they are beneficial to our children. They can accomplish, and we can accomplish that while maintaining focus on those who desire that other type of program for skill development. It should not be a choice mutually exclusive between skill development program and the attractor programs. We can do both at the same time and do them well.
Hey, Mr. Mons, same question. Should the selection be further expanded of the attractor and magnet programs, or should more focus be put on trade skills?
Honestly, I think right now, St. Lucie County is doing a great job with some of the career-ready programs that they have, especially the program at Fort Pierce Westwood, which is a gaming program, the marine science and biology program, with the partnerships down at the Harbor Branch location. The only thing that I would say that kind of is disheartening to me is that a student has to kind of identify themselves to go to a particular school in a particular area in order to be engaged in those particular courses. What I would love to see, if there was an expansion for the kids to be able to go to those particular, have an opportunity to be engaged in those classes, and maybe one of the local schools that's closer to the area. And I know that's tough, and I get that, being an educator, I understand that. But I think that there needs to always be choices, and we can always say that, you know, we, I want to have more than just one opportunity for my kid to be successful. Trade schools are something that needs to come. So again, we're talking about that student choice opportunity again. And so the expansion piece of it, to me, again, they're doing a great job, wonderful job. I'm not, I'm not saying that they- And so the expansion piece of it, to me, again, they're doing a great job, wonderful job. I'm not, I'm not saying that they they're not doing a great job. But I think that if we look at where the schools are located, you have kids being bused from Fort Pierce all the way out to southwest Port St. Lucie to be engaged in a program that they love the most, or a kid being bused from southeast Port St. Lucie all the way down to inner-city Fort Pierce for a veterinary program that they want to be involved in. So some of those things can cause problems, not only this kid, but the parent. But I I understand what's going on, but they definitely need to expand. We need trade schools. We need vocational schools. We need opportunities for our kids to be able to be successful in every genre of education.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, same question. Should the selection be further expanded for the specialized education or for trade skill development?
I I think that the the school district right now is doing a great job in in those areas. Truly great job. They've formed many, many partnerships, and they've done a great job. Technology has has changed everything. Just what I would say that, you know, just to give you a perspective of what I'm gonna say at the end here. I have my whole family is involved in teaching. My my wife's an E S E teacher in the county here for twenty-one years, just retired. She still teaches. My daughter is a teacher. She was Teacher of the Year at a school last year. Very proud of that. I gotta get that in. My brother was a teacher. My father was a teacher. My sister was a teacher. I have twelve teachers in my immediate family. And I myself was in charge of training and recruiting from one of the largest real estate organizations in the world and worked out of the trade center, and I taught classes, but I taught adults. And it didn't matter whether you taught to adults or children. It's the same thing. All teachers know this. And I'm here to remind everybody, and that's when if I get elected, that's what I'll be doing the next four years. I'll be here to remind people old things that that truly work and still work. Everything changes, but some things remain the same. People don't care what you know until they know that you care. And it goes to children more than anyone else. You have to show them you care. So if we want to know, and the last part of that question, Carol, was focused on on trade or skill development, you know what? Let's ask the kids. Let's ask the students. Let's do survey, and that's another thing that I would bring to the board and ask the board if we could have our our superintendent along with his staff do a survey, a short survey, and ask the kids, what do they want to be? What do they want to be when they grow up? What are they interested in? And then we'll find out what we need. We had a trade school that was coming in. It was gonna be a a trade school, I think, a charter school, and it didn't become a charter school because they found out they didn't get enough kids that wanted to sign up for it. Let's find out before we we act and do anything. Let's ask the kids. They don't care.
All right, move on to the next next question. We'll start with Mr. Mons. All children are unique and have specific learning capabilities and needs. So how do you propose ensuring that the educational needs are met for every child at their level in the current school structure? Should the structure of schools be changed to better tailor education to the students, starting with Mr. Mons?
I I think that as of right now, the way that the education system is set up is trying its best to to meet the students where they are. I I definitely understand that we there's more that could be done. Absolutely, there's more that could be done. But there are some non-negotiables right now that that are in schools that must that that must happen to teach the kids how to how to behave here in America, to teach the kids how to be successful individuals when they get ready to be adults. So as far as the educational curriculum and structure now, I think that there's room to grow. One of the places that I think we definitely need to grow is in our civic department. So, for example, we're not, we're not even teaching kids how to become local elected officials. They don't understand the petition process. They don't understand the monetary payment process. So that that's that's a piece that I think that I would definitely speak to the board and speak to to Mr. Jent and see if we can kind of get that incorporated so that we can have these young men and women like myself who are trying to fight for the community that they were educated in. But we we don't know how to do that right now. So those are some pieces that I think here in St. Lucie County need need to happen. Nationwide, there are some things that that need to take place, but Governor DeSantis is bringing some new standards down. The new standards are called the B E S T standards, the best standards. And those standards are going to get rid of the Common Core program. Those standards are also going to bring back cursive writing. So tho- those standards are doing wonderful things, and they're going to make sure that all the arts programs are embedded in our in our curriculum for years to come. So I think that with the decisions and the conversations that we're having, things are moving, things are changing, and I think that we're on the right path here in St. Lucie County. But with me there, I think we'll be able to do some more things.
Okay, to Mr. Kelly, same question. Should the structure of schools be changed to better tailor education?
Well, you know, this is another, this is another problem that I think our curriculum, mostly the curriculum, is set by the state, what we do here. I I I've I've got to really investigate that even more clearly. But from what I understand from the teachers that I talk to, the curriculum can change. We've gone away from all the testing that we used to constantly, I used to hear complaints from the teachers. All we do is teach kids to take tests, you know, and I guess that's not as as important as it was. But again, if you're gonna talk about curriculums, and I know it, it's just not indigenous to St. Lucie County because the state's so involved in our system. It's not like up north. Things were run differently. They were run by the counties and the cities. We had our own boards. And and they were and they were taxing authorities, and I'm not saying talking about raising taxes. There's nothing to do with that. It's it's having the freedom to set your curriculums. And we don't have that that total freedom to do that. I think we can, again. What what do we? Ask the kids. Ask the parents. I think the survey's got to be done, not just not just in our school system, but maybe we could do it here and give it to the governor and give it to the office and let them know, are we doing the right things? Back in the old days, we had such things that that were great. We had after-school classes for Future Teachers of America. I don't know if anybody remembers. We had Future Engineers of America. We had all of these things, and they were great. That's all we had at that time. Now we have technology. We have all these great groups, and and we just have all these people that are helping us, and the and the community is just so great for our school system. I think we got to utilize them more. But let's find out what they want. What do the parents and the kids want in that curriculum? And I wish we controlled it more, but I don't think we do.
Okay, question to Mr. Wiley. Should the structure of schools be better? Should be they be changed to better tailor education? Lennox Wiley.
Okay, so we need to ensure that all students receive the best education possible. And we must work with equity for all students. Ensure that students who learn differently are given the tools they need to become high achievers. In addition, students and their parents should be adequately supported by the system. And we should do whatever we can do within our system to make the changes and the tweaks that are necessary to make sure that children, like I said, who learn differently are given an equal opportunity to succeed.
Okay, our sixth and last question officially tonight to Mr. Kelly. In the event of a second wave or continuation of COVID nineteen, what would you do to ensure the health and safety of students, of teachers, and school staff? Mr. Kelly.
Oh, that's probably the most important question you're asking tonight, and when you're talking about right now, what's going on right now at this moment. And again, unprecedented times. The decisions to be made right now about the COVID, opening the schools up, safety, and it's not just safety, I just we have to keep them safe. But after this is all over, and it will be, we have to get back to worrying about our security too. We didn't finish doing all the security that we were gonna do with our with our sheriff's department and our police department, which I think is way ahead of other counties. But it it's a problem. It's a problem like trying to juggle a couple of bowling balls, you know? I don't know if anybody here can do that. I can't do it. But I I'll try like heck to juggle them. I'm gonna listen to the to the experts on this one. I I'm glad that we put the schools off a little bit, and we're gonna we're gonna start a little bit later, and then we were gonna. I have a different perspective on the whole thing than I did six weeks ago or eight weeks ago. I wear my mask everywhere. I I do what I'm told. I listen to to the experts. Why wouldn't I? They're they're there to help me travel, to live longer and take care of myself. So I I wash my hands. I do what I'm told, and I make my grandchildren do the same thing. And I hope every kid that that comes back to school is does what they're told to do because it's all for their safety. There's so many new square things that they they're trying to put in classrooms to develop where kids can be together but be separated by plastic. I I we we need to set up a, and this is most important, a test. We have to test, test, and test. We need to have our own indigenous program of testing to go to every school and have these people that work for us on hand, that they can do tests that come back the same day or immediately, as soon as we can. That has to be done. Same thing in security. It's tantamount to everything, and there's so many people talking about things that surreptitious things that are out there that I it's hard to believe. I'm gonna go with the experts on this one and and do what I'm told.
Okay, Mr. Wiley, health and safety of students, teachers, and school staff.
To ensure the safety of our children and students in this pandemic, we must first choose science over politics. And let the doctors and the scientists take the lead in combating this deadly virus. Then, based on existing facts and evidence, we must make rational decisions as to how to go forward with opening schools, holding classes, and brick-and-mortar structures. We must also work to develop a sound, distant learning agenda. Because as we have had to learn in a very, very quick time, the concept of schooling has now been changed forever.
Okay, well, certainly. And we now with Mr. Mons for the safety and health of teachers, school staff, and students.
Um, I think right now that I think every school in America right now is trying to figure out how to bring these kids back to school safely. I think that we all want to make sure that everyone is going to be safe. I don't think anyone is doing anything to bring, try to bring kids back with the mind with the mind that the kids are going to be hurt. I mean, I'm right now, we're trying to figure out what's the best possible way to do that. We we I see that there's digital, there's thermal imaging scanners that scan kids, you know, head for to see if their temperature is is at the one hundred point three threshold that the C D C guidelines have 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 decided to to hand down to the schools. I think that they're they're trying to make sure that they're moving things out of the way as far as the desk, and and they're preparing to 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 receive kids. I think the biggest problem that we that we're seeing now is that the parents, of course, and rightfully so, are worried about sending the kids back to school and the possibility of catching this particular COVID nineteen deal. So when we come back to school, every school in America has a robust policy and procedure i- if this thing comes back in the second wave. And I'm pretty sure that the the first time when we went to to distance learning, that was something that that we all had to jump on really, really fast. And 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 kudos to St. Lucie County for jumping, you know, jumping in that and making sure that the kids were able to be educated to the best of their ability while they were home. But I think now they have a robust system in place, so that if the second wave does come, they're able to make sure the kids are being educated the correct way and in an efficient way. And and they're also putting things in place for the parents to to be well-informed about what's happening. I think that we're reaching out to the health officials and in in constant conversations with health, health officials about how to bring kids back. What does that look like? What that should look like? If kids are gonna wear masks or not, is that mandatory or not? And of course, everyone has an opinion about that. But I think at the end of the day, when we bring kids back to school, we want to bring them back to school, want to educate in the correct way, but it has to be in a safe manner. And if it's not safe, then of course, it cannot happen.
Okay, thank you. And now let me just confirm here. We have finished all of our questions. And I believe we are moving to closing statements. Each of you will have two minutes. And let's start with Lennox Wiley.
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. A big thank you to the voter, to the voters of St. Lucie County for your support and the roughly four thousand signed petitions, making me the only candidate in this forum who was placed on the ballot by the will of the people and not by writing a check to the Board of Elections. I have a plan to bring the great businesses of our county to partner with the St. Lucie School District and provide new and needed funding to meet the needs of a growing school system. Our population is expanding, and the need for school funding is even greater and requires thinking outside the box. We need someone like me, who has the mindset of a thinker and problem solver, who would look at things with a fresh set of eyes and find workable solutions. I'm running because I care deeply about the issues of the disabled, equity for all students, gender bias, race relations, and bullying. I'm running because I want to be your voice and would make it a full-time job to put our children first. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Closing statement now from James Mons.
Well, again, my name is James Mons. I'm running for St. Lucie County School Board District Two. I was educated in this community, the community that I love the most. I founded programs in this community to help the students and cultivate their minds to be successful, God-fearing, community-based individuals. I've seen young men go to college. I've sent over a hundred kids to college by way of making sure that they needed what they they had, what they needed as far as S A T scores and A C T scores. And I've seen those young men come back and do some wonderful things, become teachers, become school, become police officers, become firefighters. And that's why we do it. We do it not for the money. We do it because we love to just to see our kids just do great. Being an educator myself, I was in the classroom. I was the dean of students. I was an E S E teacher. I was an autistic coordinator, and now I'm an assistant principal. I'm a founder of an educational program in which we've been doing this for nine years. I'm a founder of an athletic program in which we've been doing that for ten years. With all of this experience and the experience that I have, the research that I have, the education that I have, it gives me the right and give me the opportunity to serve the community who has made me the man that I am today. Even though I was a teen father, I was able to have a support system, not only for my my parents, but from the community around me. And that's individuals that did not look like me, individuals that did look like me, but they they understood that they had a human investment in myself. They took time out to know, to help, and make sure that I've become the man that I am today, speaking to you now. So with all of that being said, who else would you want to educate our students? Who else would you want to make decisions educationally for our babies other than the educator, other than someone who's doing it every single day? Living and breathing education, living and breathing security, living and breathing safety to make sure that our kids become the wave of the future, to make sure our St. Lucie County students are globally competitive in career and college, and come back to this community and give back the same way that I've done. So with all that being said, vote James Mons, August sixth to August eighteen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now the closing statement, Jack Kelly.
Well, I'll tell you, I wish we so much easier to run for office every time I have, if I had that smile that Mr. Wiley has and also have a lot in common with my other opponent there. I was a teenage father, been married for over fifty years, and it just goes to show that I can follow direction, and I have for a long time. Best thing that ever happened to me, but I don't think it should happen to everybody. As far as why I'm running for office, I'm running for office because I'm the luckiest guy in the world. I got to move here thirty years ago. St. Lucie County and Port St. Lucie has been just wonderful to me. I have a wonderful life, and again, I'm a lucky guy. And I want to tell you, I was not a fortunate son, like Mr. Fogarty says in the song. Came from a very poor family, wouldn't trade it for anything. When I went out to play at night, I had thirty kids to play with, and I I learned about diversity and everything right away, and I had great schools. I was lucky. I went to the best schools in the state of Connecticut when I was young. Really, really good time. But we're in unprecedented times. And one of the reasons I'm running is because I want to give back to everything that's happened to me here. But I was also encouraged and asked to run by many, many leaders in St. Lucie County. I'm endorsed and supported by the St. Lucie County Classroom Teachers Association, the Palm Beach Treasure Coast A F L C I O. Sheriff Ken Mascara was a big was a big influence on me running for this. St. Lucie County School Superintendent Wayne Jett, St. Lucie County well, former, I'm sorry, former State Representative Larry Lee and Adam Fetterman, St. Lucie County Clerk of Court Joe Smith, P S L Vice Mayor Shannon Martin, and P S L Police Chief, Assistant Chief Richeltoor, and many, many others. And I want to thank also the lady who holds the seat now. She was a big influence on me, and also Carol Holson has been wonderful to me, and she's endorsed me, and I I want to thank her very much, and I won't let anybody down. I'll be there to remind everybody. People don't care what you know until they know that you care. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all, all three of the candidates for being and taking part tonight, for being with us. We also want to thank the members of the League of Women Voters for developing all the questions and making the contact with the candidates. And we thank everyone who has taken the trouble to inform themselves, to listen, to watch, and to be prepared for this primary election, and it is an extraordinary year. So we go back to Andy Polley from the League, and certainly thank you.
Hi, everyone, and thank you all for joining us for our second candidate forum with School Board District Two. Please don't forget to vote, and if you haven't mailed in your ballot yet and you're not quite sure about those candidates, it's okay. Go ahead and check out vote411.org for more information on these candidates and other candidates in all the races that are important to you. Go ahead and check out vote four one one dot org for more information on these candidates and other candidates in all the races that are important to you. Uh, it is a one-stop shop for learning about your election. Uh, election day is August eighteenth. Early voting starts on the sixth and don't forget to do your census. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful night.